And the first item of business, as always, is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I want to apologize, everybody, for missing the last couple of meetings. Swamped with work back in December, and then I was out of town on business last week. But I'm sure none of you missed me at all. So are we prepared to address the minutes from last week's meeting? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes as drafted. I second that.
Thank you. Any comment? That motion was by Stephen, seconded by James. Any comment for amendment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and I'm abstaining because I was absent. I should also note that we're going to appoint Connor Crowley tonight as a member in the absence of Bob Daigle, who has previous work commitment. Okay, the regular business item for tonight is the application of Melvin Proskoff and Helen Hannan, public hearing for an application for a special exception, reference section 32-5, subparagraph 2 of the New Market Zoning Ordinance, to permit the construction of an addition within 125-foot setback from the Lamprey River. And a variance, reference section 32-154, subparagraph D2B of the New Market Zoning Ordinance, to permit toilet facilities in the existing accessory building at 17 Moody Point Drive, tax map R2, lot 42, in the R1 zone. Mr. Richardson, good evening.
Mr. Chairman.
If you can just introduce yourself so we can have it in the minutes.
Absolutely. My name is Justin Richardson. I recently opened my own firm. I'm with Old Hampshire Water Law, less formally with Upstate and Hatfield, and so we've seen through that when I did some work in town six or seven years ago. Thank you for scheduling this today. Today. We have fewer people here than anticipated, but with me is Dr. Melvin Proskoff. His wife or partner, Helen, was expected to be here, but the bus schedule is running late with the weather. And I suspect that the wetland scientist, Mark West, we were expecting is also probably weather-delayed, as he indicated he was going to be here. Just as an administrative matter before we begin, we submitted, I believe, a total of five letters in support, three from nearby neighbors and two from direct abutters. I think you should have those in your packages. I don't know if you would have got them before today, though. What we're here for, as you know, is for two reasons. We're looking for a special exception to expand a non-conforming residence and also a variance, because in the shoreline protection zone, there's an existing accessory structure. Just showing them the plan here. This is the existing conditions plan. This is from a plan prepared from 2014 survey. And you can see here is the existing measures, and over here is accessory structure. And what the proposal is to do is to expand the residence following the existing footprint. So this is the existing building here. You can see the addition here. You can also see shaded in pink is the existing septic system that was built in 1967. It's a grandfathered system. That's being removed. There's also not shown in this plan, but there is a sink in the accessory building that was added in 1967 that goes to a dry well. And that's also a non-conforming waste disposal system. It's not as elaborate as that. But what the Proskoffs are proposing to do in their variance request is to add a toilet facility to this building where the ordinance prohibits that. And that will go into the, there's a pump station and a tank here that's proposed. And so where this is currently 60 feet from the shoreline, everything is going to be pumped back here. This is the 125-foot setback that the town has. This is the screen line is the wetlands 100-foot setback. And then right here is, along here is actually 150-foot setback. So this septic system will be 150 feet away from the shoreline. It's, so we think that's going to have some really good benefits. The reason, and we can go into the criteria later, but I think I'll try to give you an overview of the plans, and if there's questions at any time, feel free to chime in. The reasons this is being sited the way it is is that there's a very steep incline that comes up the driveway. The driveway, the road, Moody Point Drive, is slowly peaking here, it's 22 feet here. I think it slopes back down. But as you come up the driveway, it's 30 feet at this point, maybe a little higher as you come into the garage. It doesn't sound like a big distance, but it's a fairly significant slope when you're on it and trying to drive on it. So if this building were to move back further, what that would mean is there'd have to be significant site work, either to level the ground or to raise it up for the new building. It would also be work within this protected well radius, and that would be a pretty challenging impact in construction, especially in the shoreline protection zone. So what the Proskoffs have done is there's an existing deck here that is 88 feet. The existing house that was built in 1952 is a camp. 1968, there was an addition, and then some additional work was done in '86. So that's the timeframe. But they're maintaining where the existing building is, that 100-foot setback to protect the water. There's pervious padios that are being added. There's also pervious existing patio areas that are in here that are already designed to infiltrate stormwater. All of those will be retained. This is Mark West, the wetlands scientist who I referred to before. He can answer any of the questions about what's being done to manage the stormwater, manage the vegetation requirements under the Shoreline Protection Act. The DES required this project to go through multiple revisions before. It's all been approved, and I believe the last pages of your packets were the septic system plan that's stamped, as well as the shoreline permits that were issued by DES. The, so the main, let me just start then with the criteria, I guess, that are under section 32-5. And this is, that provides for basically, almost like, an allowed use or a use by special exception, where you have a non-conforming structure. The 125-foot structure is here. Obviously, the expansion cuts into that. This addition is here. Essentially, what the ordinance says is that there are six criteria for a horizontal expansion. The structure is no closer to the lot line than the existing structure. That's being done here, because if we treat the shoreline as if it's a lot line, that's 88 feet, and this will maintain 100-foot setback. It's conforming in the R1 zone. I believe it's 25-foot setback on the side and rear. It meets all of the other dimensional requirements. The second criteria is that the expansion is not in the 100-foot floodplain. That's not shown on the plan, but this building is at 30 feet above sea level at the highest point here, and the shoreline is, you can't see the contours, it's on the plan, it's at 6 feet is the shoreline. So they're well, well out of the floodplain. If this floods, then downtown New Market will be in an interesting situation. The, you know, the kind of, the criteria that I think is worth the most consideration is that the owner has to demonstrate that no other expansion reasonably fulfills the intended purpose that can be achieved in conformance with the chapter. And basically, as I noted, one of the biggest impacts here is that the slope that comes down here, the well that they want to avoid, if they were to move this out, it would put the development out on the road, up on a high point. You'd have a lot of additional site work and cost and expense. And we think that maintaining 100-foot setback is a reasonable compromise, you know, in light of the site topography. And it shouldn't have any adverse impact. And in fact, the addition of some stormwater treatment technology, the, also keeping this kind of in its current location, the septic system will be removed. It leaves enough space here to move all the effluent out there. So that's, we think those changes kind of, it fits well on the site, whereas pushing it further out would be a lot of additional expense and construction work that would have to be done. The next, the next criteria is that item four is sanitary sewage and disposal and water supply are provided. There is the existing well, and obviously the new septic system, which was designed by Susan Ferretta. It's been approved by DES. And it's, you know, this is going to be a big improvement over what the 1967 technology that's there now. The fifth criteria is the expansion shall not render the lot proportionally less adequate. And that's true here. We're meeting all of the other dimensional requirements. And in fact, you know, if we were to look, read this literally, this 88-foot extension is the closest part of the structure, but there's going to be back an additional 12 feet. And then the last criteria is that the expansion will not, or does not adversely affect abutting properties, public health, safety, or general welfare. And obviously, you know, this is a fairly big, good-sized lot. It fits right in the center, and we think that it's, those criteria have been met. The ordinance also provides for a vertical expansion. And in the package, we didn't address this directly, but it was brought to my attention that there will be a slight increase in the height of the existing structure. And so if you look at the criteria that are in the same section, 32-5, that applies to this addition and our special.
Can I ask you how much is slight? Is it a foot, 10 feet?
I have a plan of the garage.
Sure. Come on, kick them out. I don't know, but Dr. Proskoff can tell you.
Words like slight make me nervous, that's all. Give us an idea.
It's going to be less than two stories, maybe story and a half type of thing. At the far end, where the garage current is, and these are the current, Melvin Proskoff, these are the current footprint, what had been done by the architectural designer. The final external view is not, is not made yet, but, see, so that it doesn't look like a motel, there'll be stepped-up roof lines. The ridge, this over here is part of the existing structure.
Yes.
And then the other parts that are going down will be stepped up.
Okay. Thank you. So slight looks like slight, based on what I just saw.
I think so. I mean, we talked about it, and I didn't have the fingers at my fingertips, I didn't have the figures at my fingertips, excuse me. The criteria are very similar for a vertical expansion. The first, it's under B, it says that portions of structures within a setback may be enclosed or expanded upwards if granted a special exception. And then the first criteria is number one, if an upward expansion, it should not have any adverse impact on neighboring property, including but not limited to blocking of views and/or sunlight. And where, you know, the building is approximately 100 feet from the property line, the expansion is relatively small. It fits over the existing building, so, and the abutters, I should mention, we sent the plans to everyone electronically, so they've had an opportunity to look through all this. And, you know, there's been really positive feedback that we've got on that point.
It looks like the house is elevated above the road anyway. Is that accurate?
Yes, yes. As I pointed out before, this, so this is the 22-foot contour here, above sea level. This is the 20-foot contour. I think it, the road dips down a little bit right there. And then this is a 30-foot contour.
Yeah.
Right, right here. So, you know, it's already fairly up, and that's why, that's why, you know, moving this back with the hill here being so high, if we moved it closer to the road, it would make the structure more imposing.
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Proskoff? Or Dr. Proskoff, I'm sorry.
The existing house is a ranch, and it's literally built along the crest of the hill. Because not only does the road come up from Moody Point Drive up, then it also goes down steeply down towards the river.
Sure, I understand. I'm just thinking in terms of blockage, there's really no opportunity to block anybody's view, just in the nature of where it is.
In fact, if it moves forward towards the road more, it would block the view of the neighbors at 19 Moody Point Drive, right next to it.
Capron?
No, that would be the Breachers. The Breachers are here, in fact, today.
And Capron is in the corner, correct? And we have a letter from them?
You have a letter from Capron. Capron is just down the driveway, sir. So the, the driver, Capron is here. Breacher is here. Latman is here. And the other abutter is Lyons.
Yeah.
And Lyons is all the way down here. It's a big house all the way down here at 11 Moody Point Drive, but they're direct abutters because they own, they own the private road. So this is Moody Point Drive.
Yeah.
And we have that secondary gravel driveway that was the original only access to the house. And I think you have a picture of that from 1974, picture. So they only just rode that right away out here. And the fourth abutter is Dexter, and it's across Moody Point Drive over here.
Okay.
So the only ones that are really affected would be that one and Capron, which we have a letter of.
Agreement.
An agreement. So I don't see a problem. That's what I'm getting.
Right, that's what I'm, I agree. Thank you. Mr. Richardson, I'm sorry, carry on.
No, that's okay. No, these are good questions, and it's better to get them as soon as they're fresh in your mind. The next criteria is, again, this is item three under section B of 32-5, oh, no, excuse me, two, is if it's an upward expansion, it shall not exceed the maximum height limitations specified in this chapter, the zoning ordinance. And that's 35 feet in the R1 zone, and this is well below that. The next criteria, no part of the structure is located within the 100-year footplain, floodplain, excuse me. And then finally, the expansion shall not render the lot proportionally less adequate. And I think we've covered that. It's really, all the dimensional requirements are met, except for the 125-foot setback. The materials that we provided kind of covered, you know, the kind of detailed information. So I won't, I won't go into those on the special exception unless there are any questions. But the variance criteria, I think, are worth going through because they're a bit more technical, and I wanted to kind of, and that relates to the variance, again, to connect this building, which is the 1967 shed that has a sink into it that currently discharges to a dry well. And during the DES process, what DES said was is that they wanted the dry well to be taken out because it's a potential, I mean, it wasn't failing or anything, but it is a potential water quality impact in the future. So they wanted to see that connected into the septic system. That in turn had an impact on the subsurface review, because they said, well, wait a minute, you have an additional structure here that you're connecting. So they asked that this be considered, or the system be designed, as if this is an additional bedroom. And so that increased the size and increased the costs. I think it kicked it up to a five- or six-bedroom system. And so that left the Proskoffs with, well, okay, we don't intend to use it. And I think I indicated the materials. The zoning ordinance says that accessory structures shall not be used for habitation. That's in the zoning ordinance, and we assent to that for, you know, as a condition if this board wanted to. It's actually in the covenants that are, that are governed this development as well. Although the wording is from 1959, so it's a little strange. But, so that's, what that meant was is that the Proskoffs had to incur significant additional expense to upgrade this whole system in order to provide this, but it's not going to be used as a bedroom. But it made sense, having incurred all that expense, to then add toilet facilities. What that will do is it'll allow people who are down, there's a dock over here, who want to come in and, you know, use the facilities without having to track, you know, water and wet feet and things into the house. They can do that. And obviously, everything will be, whether there are toilet facilities here or not, everything discharges into the same system, into this pump station, and then up to the leach field where it gets treated. So it really is, when we get to the criteria about the fair and substantial relationship, there's really no additional protection to the public purposes that would result from denying a variance, because everything's being pumped and treated in the same place. The improvements are all there. It's just an expense on the landowner to, if he were not allowed to use the septic system as it was designed to be used. So I've jumped ahead a loop.
Maybe you want to talk to your attorney first.
Basically, the added expense is just to have the sink.
Yes.
Just a car.
That's correct.
The, what he said is the added expense?
Would be to have the sink.
Would be to have the sink.
Yeah. I mean, the other option, I suppose, although we didn't consider this, would be to remove the sink and, you know, all, you know, the existing water structure there. There is an existing water line that was on the other plan here. You can see our existing conditions plan. This is how it currently goes. Obviously, with the new addition coming in here, it's being reconstructed slightly. The line will come down to the back of the shed, and then it goes around here and goes into the pump station where it then goes up.
And these were part of the DES.
Right. So, so the record is clear, because I don't think we're picking up Dr. Proskoff, is DES has approved the maintenance of the sink and the addition of the toilet, subject to the expanded septic and the pumping of the material up to the new and expanded septic system, leach field.
Yes. And there were three levels of review to that, the first being the wetlands review, because any construction within the 100-foot setback requires a wetlands permit.
Right.
And Dr. Proskoff was required to demonstrate minimization and avoidance. And Mark West can talk about that if you'd like. Then there's the shoreline permit for the entire shoreline zone, and then obviously the subsurface review, which is then what kicked it up to be the additional size and expense.
Sure.
The, so the first of the variance criteria are that it will not be contrary to the spirit of the ordinance. And I think, you know, obviously, it conflicts with the requirement, but the Peter Laughlin and his treaties we cite, and also the case of, I believe it's, I wrote it down here, excuse me, well, it's mere conflict with the ordinance itself, is not grounds for denial. You have to look at, does this conflict with, you know, the basic zoning objectives, or does it threaten public health, safety, and welfare? And this is actually going to promote all of those things. The spirit of the ordinance is really reflected in the ordinance itself, and it talks about water quality protection, and I think that's what we're trying to do here. The next criteria is, and sorry, I'm wrapping two into one in the package, we also included in our analysis of the public interest also the spirit of the ordinance. Those are really covered together. The substantial justice, that's the criteria where the cases say that you have to weigh the harms to the individual owner versus the benefits to the public that the ordinance is intended to provide. And really, what we're doing here is, there's a benefit to the purpose of the ordinance by allowing all of this to be connected to the proposed system. And the hardship is that he's having to incur the additional costs to connect it, just to keep the sink that he already has in the property. So we think that criteria is met. And as I said before, I mean, what is going to happen here is that all the waste are going to be pumped up into this system, which is going to be a significant benefit, whether there's a toilet facility here or in both locations. The last criteria, or excuse me, the next criteria is the surrounding, values of surrounding properties are not diminished. And there's, you know, I think the only potential impact on property values in this situation because of the configuration would be if the septic system were to fail. And obviously, that's exactly what we're trying to prevent here. So for the hardship test, which is the last, the, one of the key findings is that there are special conditions to this property that differentiate it from others in the zoning district. And I think the special conditions is really that this is a grandfathered 1967 structure that could have never been built. It was hooked up in 1967, and DES has more or less mandated that it be connected. The next part of the hardship test is that there's no fair and substantial relationship. I don't want to go over this to beat this to death, but we talked about how the fact that, you know, the benefits are to the public to protect water quality, the hardship is all the additional expense. And be connecting this just to keep a sink would be a major, major cost without any real benefit to the purposes of the shoreline. And the last, the last criteria is really that the proposed use is a reasonable one. And considering this is a shoreline property, there's no other real, you know, access that has bathroom facilities. I think that's a reasonable use, it will fit in very well. There's already, you know, there's a buffer here that's being maintained, and I think it'll end up being a, you know, a very attractive use. Is there anything else? So Dr. Proskoff is here, and I can answer any questions as well. We have Mark, who's here now. I'm sure you'll hear from the abutters, too, as well as in the letters. So if there's no questions, I'll have a seat, and we'll let this continue.
Okay. What we'd like to do is, at this point, open a public hearing, and depending on the comments coming in a public hearing, give you a chance to address those, and then we'll close the public hearing and get questions from the board at that time.
Excellent. Thank you.
So at this point, I'm going to open the floor for a public comment, if any, on the pending application. I do note that we do have five letters of support for the project, for the proposal in the record. Seeing no public comment, I'm going to close the public comments section of the hearing and ask the board if there's any questions for the applicant, any items that folks would like to have some more information about. Speak up. Don't all speak at once. Well, speaking only for myself, I think the application is very comprehensive. I think we should take up the special exception first and then take up the variance second as a separate item to make it very clean and clear on the record. I think when I boil this down, I see a net betterment and a net benefit for the concerns of the zoning ordinance as a whole, because you're taking a existing, not that there's any evidence that there has been any problems, but this is really forestalling and putting in a much more advanced and comprehensive septic system further away from the river, which would hopefully result in a net benefit in the long run for water quality, which is an overriding concern of these particular ordinances. So I am happy to see the board approve the special exception application, adopt the applicant's submission as to findings of the board, and move forward. adopt the applicant's submission as to findings of the board, uh, and, uh, move forward to approve the special exception on that basis. I'm, just a proposal.
Go ahead.
Mr. Minutelli?
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the application for the special exception, granting it, uh, to permit the construction of addition, of, of an addition within the hundred-and-twenty-five-foot setback from the Lamprey River, um, and approving, or adopting, rather, um, the application as the findings.
I second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. And then let's take up the variance application. I, is there any comment on the variance application? Any questions?
I don't, I don't have a comment, is it, is it kind of going along with the special exception? It definitely would be in public interest to grant it, um, by the findings.
To clean up, as it were, a potential issue with the dry well, which is what the, the E S identified as a potential issue, sure.
I, based on the presentation, I agree that there's no diminished value of the properties surrounding this property.
Yeah. It's, the spirit of the ordinance is to protect, you know, is to, it's consistent with the purposes of the ordinance, really, what they're attempting to do here. And there are some unique conditions in this property, there's some steep grades and things, and there are some, some challenging existing structures and underground structures, so it seems like a good opportunity to clean up and make these things, um, in the long run.
And to my knowledge, there's, D E S has targeted that area for quite some time preceding this application, and they're concerned about, uh, uh, leach fields leaching into the bay, and, and that's been an ongoing-
Mm-hmm.
...focus of, of D E S, so this is, uh, obviously helping reduce that concern, so.
Yep. So I propose, um, based on these comments and my own feeling, that we approve the variance as presented, subject only to the condition that the structure marked on the plans as existing storage building, uh, not be used for habitation, which they are already agreeable to and is part, apparently part of their, uh, deed covenants, anyway. And again, adopting the presentation materials, which are very comprehensive and well-done, as to findings of the board.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, James. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
That was Wayne's seconded?
Wayne's seconded that, I believe.
He got the first.
James.
I heard a neck go. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was the most, one of the most complete applications I've seen. Very good job.
Thank you for your hard work. Any new-
My client would tell you it took the longest to prepare.
He's telling that. It passed.
Now, your attorney will tell you that as soon as you win, pack up your stuff and go.
Just been through a water main break in New York City, where it was most subway service, and then we got on the C and J, and there was an accident on four ninety-five.
Oh, boy.
It was a hour and a half, so, thank you.
So, I hope, at least you got here safely and get home safely, please.
I do. We just signed up. We just signed up.
Yeah, we got here.
The first thing they teach you in law school is, when the judge rules in your favor, get out as quick as he can, before he or she changes their mind. Not that any judge ever ruled in my favor or anything, but it might happen someday. Any new world business to come before the board at this time?
Susan mentioned this.
You've got to get closer to the microphone.
We have some Z B A terms coming up for the appointment.
Whose terms are coming up?
I don't know, I'm asking.
I don't know.
We were at some planning board terms, but I don't do another, we're going to go to the board.
If, if, oh, okay. If there are any Z B A terms that are coming up, maybe Sue could shoot out an email saying, hey, knucklehead, you need to reapply to whoever that applies to? It's going to be a busy election year, we've got at least three this year, so. Any other new world business to come, come before the board? Entertainer motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Steve, thank you, and you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Connor. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.
Right. Thank you.